First meeting. Uh, we are required to do number four, which is to reorganize and approve the appointments for this board. Uh, before we get into anything else. So right now, open meeting and entertainment to accept the agenda as may be amended. Some of those. I don't have, uh, Jeff says we don't count minutes.
Right, we'll do minutes next thing, next week.
We already tense.
Well, we're doing it then.
Alright.
So then number four is select board reorganization.
Make a motion to uh nominate um Steve Ferret as the chair.
I guess, I can't, come on, we could really tie it up.
I have Paul and Fear since he can't be whatever. You can take it from here, Steve. Well, I'm gonna then make a motion to.
It's such a sign that.
The rules of procedure.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept kind of select what rules of procedures from all amendments from last year.
Yeah, there were no change that.
No, seconds.
All in favor of accepting the rules as presented, please, may I?
Hi.
And you've got the list of people who.
Yeah, can normally we do this later.
And we can, we can delay it, it just was.
It's been all this with the file.
Let's do that, we'll do that if you have to.
So did you conquer this?
Yes, okay.
You're the sense.
Sense viewer, that's sought after position.
Into newer offenses.
Yeah. I have no concerns time.
Hey, was anyone here or anyone that zoomed in? The citizen input at this point is for something that is not already on the agenda. When we get to an item, then it will be open for people to talk about that item. And I expect. Most of you are here for number eight.
Thanks.
Thanks, uh, and nobody unmuted?
Just if you have any.
Did you do the board of liquor control?
Uh, okay, I have uh some liquor licenses for you, um. So first I wanted, uh, so first I would say the uh Killington Restaurants has an outside consumption permit, this is for the Bear Mountain. Mogul Challenge, it's the same, uh, it's at Bear Mountain, same as it has been in the past. And.
Question for the town clerk and move forward, the Killington Restaurants outdoor consumption permit. The Bear Mountain Global Challenge. So like, pretty sure I have a list of stuff and you gave us the drawing and everything, it's the same drawing.
Right. Right.
Yeah, we have a list in front of us and there are some yellows highlighted.
Yep, those are the ones that we have the payment for, so those are the first, third and outside consumption permits that we're looking to approve tonight. That's Woodstock Hospitality, which is doing business as Mountain Meadows Lodge. And the Fire Truck Brewery, which is Casey's Caboose.
Okay, so Woodstock Hospitality is a first class, a third class, and an outside consumption permit.
Correct.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with Woodstock Hospitality. For those two licenses.
I'm in favor of him.
I make a motion, the next one is uh Fire Truck Brewery Brewery, which is Casey's Caboose, I think you said.
Yep.
And that's a third class, first class, and outside consumption permit. Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward on those. Hi. That it, like, pretty sure.
That's it, thank you.
You.
Your discussion.
Well, I've received the letter, so the letter uh was presented from. Killington Search and Rescue uh related to coming up with a vote of no confidence and a request for separation from the existing fire department to be able to work in a semi. Work independently um from the fire department. Um, several of the things that have taken place since uh Chief LaHart took place, took office. Is we've been working on making sure that we meet all of our requirements for for training certifications, uh, these things all relate to safety, viability. Uh, and things of that nature. We, after seven weeks, I know the the chief had been asking. Some people about getting all the certifications and all the process. And had not received them in the form that he needed so that he could review them, and then once they were presented on March ten. Uh, the certifications did not include certifications, they included a list of people, what the certifications they held were, but no certifications. Um, the chief, as a result. Due to uh risks that he he had reviewed the equipment, it is something that he has done in early in his career, he actually used to do the inspections for NFPA nineteen eighty-three, which is all of ropes and and equipment logs. And had not, and felt that the equipment that we were using did not meet standard, and we didn't have any training records that allowed us to do some of the the rescues that we were doing. So, as a result, and after deciding to. To suspend operations from KSR temporarily until such time that we could verify all certifications and processes and and trainings. Uh, that we were looking to do that, we talked, called in the city of Rutland and their rescue people, uh, they came in to review our system. Uh, and I can put that up on the screen. But that will be the weekend, and uh it's basically there to. Primary. Before we get into that.
Yep.
Five.
Got so much paperwork here. There's a Killington Search and Rescue Operations Leadership Manual.
Yes.
That's dated two thousand and nineteen. Okay, and then there's a whole bunch of. Rules and regulations in here. Um, is anyone? A number one. You gave us this letter dated March twelfth. Um, that says something about wet signatures, but this looks like just somebody's cellphone text or whatever. Have everybody's endorsement, here's the list, and please note the way Ziggy and Amelia want their names to appear. Um. I see an Amelia, I don't see a Ziggy. But I'm not sure which one is Ziggy. Okay. Um. He's William. Okay, I see him as number eleven, so, um. I guess I have two questions, one is. The author of the letter, and then it says that there is, um, who is it? And then it says that there's wet copies available, so did everybody really sign this?
I, as part of the letter I received, I did not receive any actual signatures, that was the letter as presented, that was what was presented in the.
Okay, I mean, it says somewhere in here, I think it said that there are.
Electronic signatures.
Well, they said that there there, there are wet signatures attached Sunday three twelve twenty-three roll call. Letter sharing wet signatures available on request, which just throws me off, this is that, like, I also read the Mountain Times when it went into there. And it basically said in the Mountain Times that. Some of these signatures were for people that may have resigned prior or are no longer on or whatever. So I just don't want to get mixed up if there's some people in here that didn't sign this, but was. Resigned prior. So, is everybody on here, the seventeen names? Actually signed on to this letter is my question. I mean, I have, I have Bob Schlatter, Dave Kopic, Joel Blumenthal, I guess. Murray McGrath, Jen Robinson, Denise Coriel, Amelia Gardner, Steve Finer. Don Crenzegras, Connor McGrath, William Gugan. Gugan, Nick DeMayo, Ashley Murray, Zach Williams, Kathy Capetta. Courtney Harvey, Nate Harvey. So. All these people here tonight, I know that.
Quite a few of them, yes.
And you, and you all signed off on it, that's all I want to find out first, and then I'm just trying to find out from the beginning, and who is the writer of the the letter? I'm asking.
It was a, it was a compilation of myself, basically the original uh KSR leadership.
Okay. Alright, I just want to know where where it's coming from. So then the other thing is, I got this Killington Search and Rescue Operations and Leadership Manual. So in this manual has procedures or whatever that are to be followed, like in cases of this. I don't know if any of you.
Yeah, right.
You know, so are. Anybody along the lines of the power? Or the guidelines for the operations and uh still on the department at this time of search and rescue? I think there's a leadership thing in here. That shows, I think Dave, within two weeks of having a meeting, host community. Yeah, there was something in here that's saying if somebody is to be dropped from the department, that this department actually has. Their own procedures of taking care of this. That is the. Killington Search and Rescue Manual prior to, you know, as part of the corporation prior to becoming a town department. Okay, so, so the the Killington Search and Rescue Group was underneath Killington Fire Department.
Under the corporation.
Underneath the corporation, so everything has come on over to.
The town.
The town and that vote, I'm just trying to refresh my memory. So like this search and rescue manual from two thousand and nineteen was theirs underneath. Corporation?
Underneath the Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated.
So is there another one that's supposed to be written up for what they fall underneath now?
Well, basically, we're operating still under that until the new standards and procedures are written, as that will be adopted by the select board.
Okay, so that answers my question, so that this here, this manual is the. Operations Leadership Manual Bible or whatever.
Apparently, yes.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. Now you can go on.
Okay, so one of the things that that was brought up in the, in the decision to make, to suspend operations was, you know. One thing I will tell everybody, just so you know, you know, the goal that Chief LaHart brought when he came here is. I will never put my staff or the the people we're trying to rescue in danger. And following those rules, and then the secondary piece is not putting the town at unreasonable liability. So some of the things that are required uh for a a search and rescue program is uh. Program, all of the equipment has to meet rescue requirements at FPA. Uh, they also have to have logs for the ropes, they have to have the equipment logs, and when they're used, and how long they've been used, and I get. And then, and when they go in the service and when they go out of service. Um, and then. The, as a result, you know, the the could, the, we're a a new organization doing this at the town of Killington. We we talked to the chief and we talked to the city of Rutland to have them come in and evaluate where we are, to evaluate our training records, to evaluate our equipment. And to evaluate power to go about it, and I can. The conclusions are pretty evident, if you want, I can read them. Uh, but the conclusion of the review found a noncompliance when NFPA sixteen seventy and one thousand six standards for organizational and individual training requirements. The annual training roster did not meet the requirements of the team white pages to confident. Confidently track individual member attendance or training, proper credentialing and training tracking are paramount for the AHJ. It not only determines the scope and function of the team. It it determines that the split open function of the team is reasonably prepared to operate at a designated level without risking undue harm to team members or patients. But also supplies evidence for the capabilities and recognized operation standards for the team in the event of a lawsuit. And the review of KSR team rope equipment solely based on the NFPA nineteen eighty-three and eighteen fifty-eight, which are the current standards. Uh, they have noncompliance with the standards, the lack of proper documentation to track usable lifespan of software and hardware of the equipment. Be used the AHJ with the difficulty to determine if the equipment is reliable for the team members to safely operate and conduct rescue operations. For example, NFPA eighteen fifty-eight four point three five one, the organization shall compile records on its life safety rope and equipment. Four point three four two, at least the following record shall be kept for each life safety rope and equipment item. Then after we talked to them, we also talked to Drew Clymer, who is the state search and rescue uh coordinator. And he works with Stowe, Stowe is the organization that was re- was referenced in the letter as to where the the standards we want to follow. Um, right now, Stowe does apply both the, the. The Parks and, I forget which title it is, but one of the groups for their standards and NFPA, they actually send two people every year to go get trained on how to report, take care of, inspect. All of their equipment. Um, so all of these things are required, and our, and our equipment does not meet any of the standards, but from even when it was new. Through the process of age and everything else, so the concern there becomes safety of the people using it and safety of the people we're rescuing. So basically, the chief made the decision. With the knowledge of the town manager to say, we need to spend operations till we can verify that we are operating with the proper equipment and proper training. Um, so basically, the request that I read out of the letter. Is that we are being requested to create a separate organization that can operate independently, um. That the town still manages, but if the town is going to manage it through their insurance, we still have to have oversight, and the only other potential oversight. And exists that is related to this, because search and rescue under the state level falls under the state police. So the only place to do that with the town is to do it through our police department, so that is the only other alternative. Uh, that would exist that for the town to have search and rescue operate either under the police or under. Fire department.
That's kind of jumping. Yeah, I mean, I have a letter in front of me and. You know, it's a volunteer search rescue team in Killington since two thousand and twelve, I remember when this thing was started, I believe. With. And Bob Gioletti, if I'm pronouncing his last name correct, um, started this department. Or for, it was a volunteer of that time, and I had only like six radios. You know, that became an argument later on, but, um, so it was, it was, and then. Killington Fire Department. Registered the name KSR underneath the state of Vermont. Um, LLC Secretary of State to take it underneath their wings.
I don't know, LLC.
Think, okay, so it became underneath the Killington Fire Rescue. So they've always worked underneath Killington Fire Rescue. Since.
It's historically true.
Okay, so then I jump down to my next concern is that I have. Um, it says that. This is sixth, this one, you know. Okay, third paragraph, the January two thousand twenty-three, the Killington Fire transition from volunteer to municipal, we all knew that because we were bought, we voted. With a full-time page here, this has unfortunately and unexpectedly created a versatile toxic environment for casualties. Chief LaHart initially informed the team it would function as it has, and he would learn how we work, I think he did the same thing at the fire department. EMT or whatever, however, the team was blindsided on March sixth, so that's where I want to start, I was the team blindsided on March sixth. Does after a routine fall out for a lost skier, I go back to entry, but I'm getting mixed. Information from the public, being told that, uh, well. I'm being told that the police department was called in on this rescue.
You were being called for missing.
So can you tell me like somewhere and what and how this went down?
So we put the letter out, or I see reading from a document.
This is a letter dated March twelfth from KSR. The one I was referring to, the ball happened to Brian. So how does it know it came into the police department?
Yes, Killington Police were notified of a last year over at Pyco, um, Officer Roy was on duty that day, notified. Uh, Chief LaHart for protocol, that KSR may be needed, um, at the time, Killington Ski Patrol, separate from KSR, was looking for the last skier. At Pyco, uh, a little while later. Um, I believe KSR was paged out to respond, Chief LaHart can speak to that. Um, in the meantime, uh, Officer Chris Roy was notified that the Killington Ski Patrol located the last skier. She was fine, healthy, but her not injured, if I have it on air. And uh they were bringing her out, a snowmobile. Chris Roy, Officer Roy, um, confirmed that, at that point notified Chief LaHart that KSR could be canceled because the skier was located.
Okay, so can you give me how this, how this runs down, there's a lost skier at Pyco? Okay, it goes, it went to the police department. When I look up search and rescue through the state of Vermont, um. Police or whatever, it states, it narrows all of that, it's. Search and rescue are departments inside, and either the police or the fire or the state police. Call in search and rescue is what I, what I read. So you're saying underneath this time here, it was called to the police.
Right.
Then your officer handed it over to Chris LaHart, Chief LaHart.
Notified.
Notified, then Chris, what did you do from there?
I asked if there was any assistance required, Officer Roy said that they didn't require any assistance, they had the GPS coordinates. Where she was, and we're trying to talk her into Scott Shell. There's no assistance, not needed, and I carried on, hey.
Okay. And so then I guess from the KSR folks, the search and rescue. How is that blindsiding if you weren't called this?
They were eventually called in, Officer Roy called me about two and a half hours later, said that the skier. Was not following the directions, had good ping on her still, but uh. Told Chris, I said, it's gonna be dark, it's gonna be cold, you know, probably. We're gonna, if we're gonna launch the team, we probably need to bring them in, they're here in closets, I don't know what they're gonna require. And uh, he said he was on his way up to uh Pyco to go with uh. Ski patrols and. Went ahead, tried to call Chief Schlatter and uh Mr. Kopic. I didn't have any luck, so I made a decision, launched the fire department, the EMS side. And at least start getting the gear ready. Dave and Bob both called in to me. And I told them what we had going on, and Bob kind of took it from there when he got to the station. As they were gathering their equipment to go out and assist. First Roy called me and said, hey, they spound her, they don't require any assistance, no medical assistance was needed, I offered it. They didn't want it, they were bringing her back up to her husband, I believe, and uh terminated the incident.
You guys have.
I asked a question there, did, I said that the woman was talking, being talked down, virtual Scott Shelter?
I didn't say anything.
You, no, you, when you, when, when the report, when the caller came in, they said.
Hi, we, uh, Mr. LaHart sent that.
Somebody said LaHart, that, that.
The ski patrol was uh telling me what they were. Trying to talk her back in some trail.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have any intimate knowledge of the area.
Yeah, because it's, she went off the lower quad at Pyco, it's geographically impossible.
Yeah, but, but Murray, what I'm trying to do here is. I I I'm not getting into a trail or anything like that, what I'm getting here is, is that on March sixth. There was a lost skier, nobody is arguing that we had a lost skier on March sixth.
Uh huh.
Okay, and that it somehow Ski Patrol and Pyco somehow contacted the police department? Is that what I'm told with?
We were notified of a last year.
Okay, so you're notified of a last year, and then from there, your officer called. The fire chief.
Correct.
And the fire chief is telling me he reached out to, to leaders, I guess, on. KSR. Saying that they didn't answer the phone right away. And I, well, well, I'm, let me finish, please, and that when it went out to. His fire department, he then reached out to the fire department to call them in, then he got a call from. The search and rescue leaders, right, so, and then in between the time of all this happening. There was a call that came in from either Chris Roy or Ski Patrol. Telling is that. The person was found, and there was no need for any more help. Okay, so now I got a hand up, you mind if I discuss?
No, go right ahead.
You know, I'm, I'm just trying to find everything like, you know, I mean, number one, the person was lost, and number two, the person was found, so let's just, okay?
Big topic, I'm KSR, I just want to make clear that when I received the chief's text, I was at Gore Mountain Ski Area. And within three minutes, I got it, and within three minutes, I had uh. Made contact with the next person down the list, I, you know, with, with Joel Blumenthal. And uh he was activating the team, and that's exactly how we, if if some person doesn't get the message, we get it to another person and and it. We always, we always respond that way, so, that's it.
Okay, and and I, and I was gonna come over to search and rescue, because I'm trying to find out how. You know, so I got this side where the call came in of, um, and then it went out to you. Within three minutes or six minutes, then you got a hold of Joel, and then, so then Joel, what did you do?
Simultaneously, I also had a call from uh Drew Clymer with state incidents underway. I put out a uh team text, I didn't have Chief LaHart's cell number. So he wasn't in on the text, and then Dave sent me the number, and just in the commotion, it was the incorrect number, so. Chief LaHart missed out on the whole text stream, so we basically sending the team to report to. Uh, Pyco, or that I think, or actually to stand by, because we're unclear what's happening with the incident. And then eventually, I didn't leave from Drew and Bob Schlatter within a short timeframe. All right, you from Drew, we heard that the uh subject was. Located and was stand down, and that was communicated to the team.
Okay, and then, so in in this manual somewhere, reading it off over the weekend or whatever. There, there does state about procedure of, uh, when something comes down that. Most of the time. Folks are to meet here at the, not the Public Safety Building, but at the fire rescue site or whatever. Okay, and that's what you had done, Joel, you were telling them to stand by and possibly come here.
Yeah, I mean, search and rescue is different than fire, it's, it's not an instantaneous response. And there were pieces underway, and it's common to have a standby.
Right, okay, and so I guess where I'm lost is, and this is the way it went down, I I'm just lost on the blind side, because it almost makes it like, a lot of people. Are asking me questions, and I'm sure they're asking you questions, and I'm sure they're asking you questions, because we're always the last ones.
You, you need to continue further with this whole situation to get to the blind.
But you need to be quiet while I'm talking.
I apologize.
Thank you.
But it's the rest of the sentence.
So, um.
That's what you're talking.
You know.
The rest of the sentence.
Well, I, I, I'm, the rest of the sentence goes on to say. Unexpectedly created reversal, two thousand and three. I don't know. Oh, it says, after a routine call out for a lost skier in the Pyco back country, at this time, he took the team off the line. Out of service, advising KSR it was a liability, claiming there was no documentation to verify member certifications and qualifications. Said information was shared with him prior to his arrival. KSR training certification and call out logs back to two thousand and twelve are maintained by KFR, so I guess that's Killington Fire Rescue. Uh, you know, what I'm coming to is, is I'm sticking first at this point to this lost skier. That was found, that a lot of people are coming to me saying. How does your chief tell a group not to go out? But yet, what I'm hearing even from KSR is, Joel, you said that it came back to you, and if the person was found before you can. Even put your folks out there if they were needed.
I didn't leave the house.
You didn't leave the house.
My house.
Right.
I mean, it all happened within a period of.
But is it.
Stand down.
Right, so is it true that you did what you were supposed to do, you had everybody on standby, okay? And then the call came in and said the person was found, and then you called, who called it off?
Uh, I believe it was informed by uh Drew, in touch with the PSP, people on, folks on site.
Okay.
And stand down.
You drew.
And out of redundancy. Um, I might have heard from Bob Schlatter too.
Okay. So. The lost skier case was closed, found and returned to the Pyco area, I guess.
Happy ending.
But happy, well, for her, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. And it begins after that, okay, so I'm just trying to run down, so I'm still just like a little, I mean, that part there says that blind sided, I mean. You know, I I did, well, I think all the way around, a person was lost, KSR did stand by, blah, 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 blah. And didn't have to go out, so then I guess after that.
Um, Tim, just one moment, can I make one statement?
I, I, I'm, I'm.
But you're going on on a narrative about them being blindsided, and you're not asking what the blind side was, you're assuming it was about. The rescue, which it was not.
Good like Steve here, I'm asking you, please be quiet while I'm. Steve here, I'm asking you, please be quiet while I'm going through to get my information here. I'm being told in a letter. That was written by multiple people. Maybe it's multiple different parts in here that I have to try to. Understand. Okay, and it says in here that they were blindsided. So, do you see anything? How do you read it?
Because the line says, after a routine call out. And then at this time, he took the team offline.
Okay.
In my reading it, blindsided is not about the skier, it's about being taken offline. And then it goes into the certification and qualification.
So most of the people that have read the newspaper that this went out to, um, is not reading it that way. Um, I had a conversation with Chris Lawhart, I believe, two weeks ago. Um, we were supposed, we were supposed to be meeting up with Chris. Or going over Truman's track, because I'm supposed to be giving out a certificate of occupancy for a house that was built up there. To make sure that it had the proper turnaround and everything. And Chris was about twenty, twenty-five minutes late. Because he met up with some folks of K S R. And, and he was talking to you. So can you go through what that comment, cause that, that, this is what throws me off because. To me, I've known for like six or seven weeks that there's been conversations going on with K S R to provide. Um, documentation.
Well, the, the conversation related to the fact that. You know, we'd been going, we've been operating from the time uh, Chief Lawhart arrived about seven weeks and. Still wasn't getting the information, still couldn't provide. The, the documentation that said we were qualified to do, or certified, I should say. I'm not gonna say qualified, cause people could be qualified all day long. We couldn't verify. To say that we are qualified and trained. We went to court. Basically, we have no training and no qualifications as it sits today. Um, so he was basically telling me then. I'm, I asked for, I've given him a two week time. I, I've talked to, and, and one thing that I think this department hasn't been used to. Is a different form of communication which flows through, um, staff ahead of each area. Like, you know, we have Bob Schlatter and Dave Copick. They were the ones that were met with the day that Jim's talking about and talking about the fact that. We need to have a meeting with the people. We need to get all the documentation. You know, he wasn't going out to each individual asking for them. He was talking to the person who was his and his leadership team. To provide the documentation by a certain date, which I was notified of that if I don't have documentation in two weeks, I'm gonna have no choice. But to suspend operations and we had reached that point. This, this happening. Had nothing to do with this call. Okay, this happening had everything to do with, we still don't have any documentation that proves what the certifications are for any of the people. They were not on his desk, they were not provided. And there were some people who hadn't even turned in applications, for want of understanding, but that I think got rectified. But the reality is, we still can't prove, there's no documentation, even it's been provided today, which was provided late. Is enough documentation to verify any of the certifications. And basically, the city of Rutland confirmed that when they reviewed the documentation we have. And our equipment.
So when I read the rest of that paragraph, it said said information was shared with him. Private to his arrival. Case our training certification, cer- certification and fallout logs back to two thousand and twelve. Are maintained by Killington Fire Rescue. So where are those? Because I believe I have something else in here. That said the city of Rutland went through stuff and they.
They're in the software of the computer.
It's been.
No, that's, that's the calls, but that's. Not any of the information as to who goes, I mean, like. Like, if they, it's who they go, but do they have the certifications? There's no information on the front side. We have all the, the, the backside documentation. We have no front side.
So when the city of Rutland came in. And did their, getting into, did they look at the software?
No, they did not look at the old information that would be the calls that came in, like who, who went to a call in two thousand and fifteen. They did not look at that stuff. They were looking at our current equipment and our current certifications. Cause all these certifications are only good for one, two or three years. They have to be updated every time anyway.
Where is those certifications kept?
They're supposed to be kept in a, in a file, um, with each person's name in, in the department. Um, I know the chief of heart was given a box of documentation that existed, but all of it, I think. Cutting was newer than two thousand and eighteen or nineteen for each of the members. Um, and from what I, I mean, that's, I'm going by what I'm being told. But there isn't anything in there that actually met most of these requirements. And, and one of the bigger issues is the equipment side and. We have people doing trainings that are not, we don't have verification that they're certified trainer.
You know, I mean, I know some people are getting a little. Don't read the whole paragraph, but I'm taking it as two different items here. There's the search and there's the other. And we're getting through it all or whatever. I mean, I, I, I just wanna make sure that. There has been, I guess, from this letter being put in the mountain times, it's, there are a lot of people that are reading it. I'm saying it the way they're reading it, that we had somebody call off a rescue. Um, for a lost skier. Which I think we all agree that did not happen. Okay?
Excuse me, if people misread something. Quite clear.
Well, the headline on the mountain times was not, it basically said it was called off that way. That was the way the headline read.
Okay, the headline, right. The letter which they wrote. Person, which is what they are responsible for.
If you guys have anything on that paragraph, I mean. Kind of thought we'd take it by different, I mean, it's a letter that was put in a newspaper. And we have a, a lot of people here. I'm sure based on word of mouth and newspaper or whatever and. You know, unfortunately, there is a. When we've been search and rescue operations, a leadership manual that it should have never hit the newspaper. Until like, if a person's let go. And that night that a person was let go, I did get an email. From um, Chief Lawhart telling me that he removed. A Jen Robinson, I think it is, and, and why, okay? So, um, I received an email saying that he, um. Removed Jen Robinson. I, I know people wanna throw other stuffs into the email that I received, but I did not receive that email. I did not receive it. Okay? But in this search and rescue thing, there is. How to take care of this situation. Um, nothing here says come to the. Killington Selectwood, but here once again, we are when it flows up, I guess. But they didn't say go to the mountain times either. There, there, there's, there's places that you're supposed to go through or whatever, but. You know, um, then I read. That in the letter that went to the mountain times that Denise was let go to. But I also read. That that was not the case. And I also heard that night that. A Bob Gioletti and a wit. Bobby jig. Um, and wit were brought in, okay? And Wit talked to me later on that day and said, oh my God, whatever, you know, this went down at the. Fire department of search and rescue or whatever, but. Um, all I heard was, is that Jen was like, oh my, I didn't hear. What, next paragraph? On March seventh? That's your letter, right? That was written by a bunch of people that I don't, when I said that, it says in here, in your letter, it says that. And then there's another letter that says it didn't happen that way. But I have, but I, I read your letter too. Right, and then I also got a phone call before I got all these letters that night. Explaining to me, Wit, do you wanna say what you told me that night when you got called into?
Yeah, I can just speak to what I know, the facts that I know is. People already asked, um. Bob Julito, myself, um, speak with the group and. Have an open dialogue with both members and, and leadership there since Bob and I had some experience. The formation of um, of K S R back in two thousand and eleven and twelve and then. My experience to transitioning from a constable area to more of a municipal department. I have an idea of, of what risks might liabilities could be there that some other people, but may not have a, be aware of. Including uh, K S R with the transition from volunteer department to a municipal department. So. Um, you know, my understanding of Bob has, with the knowledge of, of backcountry stuff and my knowledge is more on face on the I C and some command system. I think so, and we went there and Chief Lawhart introduced us. And we were there prepared to have a nice open dialogue and make recommendations or. You know, both, you know, things are gonna be done better or maybe equipment that's, that's new, that's needed for some of the new mountain biking stuff and. And um. I didn't really go, go that direction, unfortunately, but um, later on, I think we had a nice dialogue with the people that were still there. I mean, thought we made some headway.
Is it hand up back?
Would you like to revisit who introduced you?
Sure. Chief Lawhart introduced us.
And Chief Lawhart introduced you to the group.
He came to the top of stairs and introduced myself and Bob.
He's the one that vocally introduced you.
He did, he said this is Bob Julito.
My wife's crust.
Nice.
Uh, Chief Lawhart's wife Leslie introduced them and said that. This is um. Montgomery and Bob Julito, they are now head of first response, I mean, head of search and. Head of search and rescue and um. Whether you like it or not, these are the people that you are to listen to.
And did Chief Lawhart correct that?
No. Not that I know of.
In, in my memory. When uh, Mrs. Lawhart introduced the two men, she didn't introduce it by name. He said, these two men who are hovering over you are now in charge of search and rescue.
Can you say your name? Cause somebody had to take minutes.
I'm Kristen Brody.
Okay, thank you.
I said, I certainly didn't hear it that way, but I do know we made it very clear, we were not there to take over killing the search and rescue. I made that. Very clear. And I was absolutely, absolutely introduced by Chief Lawhart.
Is Bob still a member?
Oh, he hasn't been for about eight, nine years.
So in, in essence, it was a communications error. There's a communication issue. But you know, blindsided was, they are not, they were not gonna be taking leadership of K S R. There was no truth to that argument. And that was never presented as the final discussion. Somebody misspoke and understand that, but. They were not gonna be taking it over and that was not a change in leadership.
That's how it came across.
Well, I understand how it came across, but again, that's communication. That was, that was not what was actually happening.
Did she correct that?
My understanding is over time, it did get corrected.
For time.
So, I mean, I think.
No, I stood up at the top of the stair and I corrected my wife. She spoke, I said, that's not what's happening. And then several sidebar conversations took. But I did correct it.
Why did you have to correct her if she, if you were the one that introduced?
Introduced them.
The two gentlemen.
I introduced them.
You introduced.
Bob Giolito.
Giolito and Officer Montgomery.
Leslie went in with her blinders to try to get the rest of the information and she misspoke. He said, and I'll, I'll say, she said, she said that Bob and Wit were there to take over K S R.
To whom did she introduce?
And that's something we heard.
To whom did, did Mrs. Lawhart introduce? Officer Montgomery and Mr. Giolito.
Mrs. Lawhart did introduce that.
I, can we, can we keep the conversation coming up to the board? So instead of talking to each other, just talk to the, talk to the chair.
My wife.
I see a hand over there. Well, obviously, there is a miscommunication. Not just one person, but several people. So. A miscommunication sounds a little misspoke that, you know, one person might misunderstand, but. All this, a whole group of people to get a message of a specific thing indicates maybe not so much of miscommunication, but. Nah, I don't know what the word is to use in this thing, but maybe you ought to clarify. What he was actually trying to say and what they understood and tell us what the actual truth is.
And I've already done that. The fact is.
I'm not hearing that.
They were, yes, you did, cause I said they were not moving into any.
Not you, I want to know the truth of what's going.
Well, the thing is, it's that just becomes the he said, she said. The fact is, we have witnesses.
What is, what is?
You gonna let me talk? Wit, I witnessed it and didn't take, come away with that. The chief acknowledged that his wife misspoke, he corrected the situation. And the fact is, they were there for observation and discussion. Okay, there was no movement against K S R.
But people weren't fired, people didn't.
One person was removed because. Of, of, a series of in- incidences of insubordination and, and uh. I can't think of the other word, but like just. Constantly refusing to. To run any chain of command at all. Not one, like, it was a consistent problem that. You know, when you look at chain of command issues and you look at uh, public, public safety issues, the fact is, if you don't follow a chain of command, people get hurt. Mistakes are made. You have to have a, a, a unified discussion. It has to go through a chain of command. I don't, that's always the way it is. And the fact is. My understanding of some of the issue was. A lack of interest of having to answer to anybody in the fire department because they weren't qualified to oversee that. That was the response I was getting.
Can I, can I speak to what happened during this meeting? So when this, when. Um, Leslie came up, Chris's wife, and the guys came up. I could see, we were, we say blindsided because we had no clue, we were having a regular search and rescue meeting. We had no clue that they were gonna come and do this. Um, so after Leslie said her thing, I looked at Leslie and she was. Very upset about holders. And I asked her, I put my hand up and I asked her to please be quiet. She got upset. She thought I was putting my hand in her face. Um, at that point. It, there were different conversations going on, but I stood up and I said, this is absolutely ridiculous. This is not right. And I started to walk down the stairs. Meanwhile, Mr. Lawhart was standing by the stairway. And I turned to him and I said, this is not right. You're taking our economy away and you're taking our house away. And at that point, he looked at me and he said, I want your resignation, put it on my desk. At that time, I left and I walked down the stairs, went into the EMS room where all the fire guys were. And many of them that are here now were in that room. And I turned to them and I said, Chief Lawhart. Just told me to hand in my letter of resignation. So I'm done. Good luck. And I walked out. So to say that. He didn't fire me that night or ask for my resignation is not right. And so I never gave him my resignation, even though he said I did. Um, but I did write this letter to the, the town manager in the segment of what happened to me.
And just so you know. Never did we get a, you, nobody ever talked about you having resigned, just so.
Well, I got it, they got a, um.
That's not true, because I got a letter in here from our. Ron Regir.
Don't talk about from Denise. I didn't, at that time, I didn't.
You know, I know everybody here is trying to figure it out, but so are we, because we just get it here. But I had a letter for Ron Regir on March eighth to two forty-three. Denise Coriel, hi Denise, I guess Benny got upset last night at the SAR meeting. That Chris scheduled, I was surprised that one of the two evaluators he brought was Bob Giolletto, whatever, big G, whatever. The starting K S R and left in a house. I don't know what that means, but. This morning, when I was doing data entry, Chris gave me a list of people to delete from the roster. Run sheet, he did not know where you stood, so you are not on the list because you did not turn in your gear. Apparently, the door is still open for you. I certainly would like to see you stay in the department. I don't know what the issues are, but if there is any chance of resolving them, they may only be resolvable from within the department. Which goes back to their handbook. A list of people on the list from memory, uh, memory. Kristen Brody, Dave Copick, Jim Shury, Connor and Marty McGrath, John Friendegrass. Jennifer Robinson, Mitch Vince Saletti. Not all are SAR and some may be from lack of participation. So like this once again gets me, like when I saw Jim Shury's name on here.
It's not him.
It's not me, take my name off that, please.
Okay, so I mean, this is why, like, you know, we get all this paperwork and.
Was related to. When Chris has been working on creating the list of people that are coming over to the town for a final roster. And he's been verifying each one before he puts them on the list. Those were ones he didn't have a resolution to.
I'm just sticking to the fact, like what you're saying over there at the corner, but by the door, not the corner. A lot of miscommunication, cause even this email here from Ron, from Ron, like Ron Regir. Kind of makes it all sound like it's all of one big thing. And then I saw a Jim Shury's name on there and. I didn't think Jim was on SAR, so.
So Jim, I got a text from the chief that said, um. That he got my letter of resignation, which he did not get. And he wanted me to turn in any assets I had for. First response. And he also wanted to have any information that I hold for National Registry as head of first response. So he is under the impression that I handed in a letter of resignation.
That's that letter that I only got.
That was, that was the letter you gave to me that is your.
Right, but it's not a letter of resignation. It's a letter to you guys saying. To be aware of that.
No, this was a letter to, oh, this one here. No, this was a letter to, oh, this one here you're talking about. I think he's talking about this letter that went to the newspaper. Which says that you're gone. I did, you know, I mean, it's, everybody else can get like mad at me or whatever, but I gotta get all my questions answered. And I'm trying to find out what. What went on.
Mine.
If you could say your names for the person that's taking the minutes.
My name is Ashley Murray. Um, I was present for the events that occurred and. For many events leading up to the event and. I think that like. Maybe we're getting a little confused here because there's so much like back and forth, but leading up to this event, it was. There was a building tension happening and. I am a new KESAR member, but I watched our leadership try really, really hard to work with Chief LaHart and. A lot of what you guys are presenting here was not communicated well to them. And when they tried to fix things. He was unwilling to work with them and it seemed very much like. He just wanted to start from scratch and. There was like one of the first times he met with our group, he came into the room and he asked. Well, for one thing, he kept coming in and disrupting our meetings when we were trying to practice and like get trained and. Without any like email ahead of time or a heads up, he would just come in, disrupt our meeting, take up the whole time and then leave and. It felt as a new member, it just, it felt very chaotic and unoriented and it didn't feel like we were being. Respected and I mean, I'm obviously new, but I, I didn't feel like it was a fair situation to watch my superiors be put in. And then one of the times when he went around the room, he was asking. Like, hey, son, do you want to be a firefighter? And I watched him ask every man in the room and skips. Get over the women in the room and consistently. There were other circumstances, like with Jen, Jen expressed that the first time. She truly met him in person, she went. To get access to the gear room and was immediately. Told that she didn't have qualifications and couldn't have access. And then when she politely listed her certifications was called condescending. And. Told that he would accept her resignation immediately. If she thought it was fit because of the inappropriate behavior, which was simply. Politely defending herself, like in a really reasonable way.
So does Janet Robinson have the certification? To do anything?
She, she has extensive.
She has certified for guide work. She does not have any certification on the rescue side.
Jeez, uh. And I, I just find this guy, exactly. If he looks, I understand where you're called up. I understand where you're coming from, but um. I'm not a volunteer or a full paid firefighter or a rescue or anything like that. But I grew up in a little tiny town that most of my friends are either New York City firemen. If they survived that at nine eleven and some of them were police officers. And for a fire chief or a police chief. To come in and break up a meeting. Of his group of people because you are underneath his group. He is the fire chief. That is, that is called the chain of command.
I respect.
That is called the chain of command. And I don't think it's fair saying that the chief. Interrupted your meeting.
I respect that, I totally respect that. The, the problem was the way in which he did it. It was like. He came in, immediately said that he wanted to. Like the first time he came in, he said that he wanted to transition, like. Keep everything as it was. He didn't want to change anything and then. Decided. Totally flipped the script on that and pretty much just rule by intimidation, which. It, it just, it, and I understand, like, yes, I am new, but. Jen. Also, like, she might not have the certifications that you guys understand, but she also like. What is her, uh? Yeah.
Doesn't qualify for rescue.
So I think what we have, I think one of the confusion things here are there's certifications. For certain levels of certain things. And then there's the town. That has insurance. And we have to make sure. Well, we don't, but we're supposed to. We hire on different department heads. We only hire on a town manager. So we only hire the town manager and, and the town manager, then we had a thing, we hired the fire chief. Fire chief, what I'm getting at is, is that this is like, we're going, I guess we're past the March sixth. Lost skiers founder.
Well, except for that, none of the men in question in leadership were given those same confrontational experiences. Only the women in the group. Were treated in such a manner and there was a very, very distinct. Difference in treatment of men versus women, and that's the thing that we're focusing on here.
Well, I want to, but I'm coming still, yeah, I know, but I'm not.
And just so you know, talking about that part of it, that's personnel. And that doesn't get discussed in an open meeting. Those are things that we deal with internally, individually, like if we have a specific complaint. The one thing that the town manager is responsible for in a fire chief situation is same with a police chief. Not anything to do with operations. I'm there for liability and personnel. Okay, those are the two functions of the town manager in, in either process.
So as you're saying, given you complaints about this.
Well, this, these complaints have only had for a couple of days, we're working on it.
So this Rutland City Fire Department. Going through the records, I mean, if I'm reading this correctly, it basically is telling me that. Any of the folks that are on KESAR and the equipment is not.
Currently certified through NFPA or the, what's the other certification?
Very fancy certifications in the National Park Service.
The National Park Service. They don't qualify for what we're doing. It's not saying they don't know what they're doing, because like most of them do. But there, we don't have the proper certifications that if we perform a rescue and somebody gets hurt. There is huge liability.
So one would have to take somebody off the line.
Yes.
Because the town is at fault if someone.
That's correct.
Happy to speak.
I mean, the back corners had her hand up.
The girl.
Kathy, lady.
Um, and this kind of goes.
Names?
Sorry, my name is Kathy Capetta. I'm on search and rescue and I'm on the EMS side of things as well. I also serve the town of Pittsfield. Um, on the EMT side. My background, I'll just give a quick, quick, um, little background. Um, I'm a retired major from the, uh. From the army. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous about talking tonight. Um. I had nine years with the state police, four on their search and rescue team. I have extensive, um, background in that as well. I've sat back through a lot of this and just kind of let things unfold. Seeing the new leadership come in, I've been in his position before where I've had, I've been through many change of commands, whether my own or seen them. This is not. This is disheartening to see, um. As far as how this team has been treated with the lack of respect that we've received, with the lack of communication that's come through over the last couple of months. Um, and just to back up what she was saying before about, um, and it's related to the letter about the sexism. Um. In my twenty-three plus years, um, law enforcement and military. I've never felt it as bad as I have in this situation. So if that speaks volumes. I hope it does, um. I didn't like the situation that we encountered that night or some of the other circumstances that we. Um, have faced throughout this time. So I just wanted to say that, um. That you had an idea of who else was, um, speaking up on this team.
And none of us came, y'all came to these conclusions separately, and it wasn't until y'all got together and talked about these things that suddenly the women came forward and expressed. The same share.
I said, those are things that we deal with on the personnel side.
This is the car that's spoken.
Yes. Did you get it in there?
I did.
You got it in there before you. Drew, do you have anything you want to say or do you want to wait?
Please. I'm just watching this.
Okay. Um, my name is Steve Finer. Um. I taught the first official first aid class in nineteen eighty-three to the fire department. Had the forty year involvement. I spent eight seasons teaching for the National Outdoor Leadership School. Mountaineering. I was an outdoor educator's educator. Um. I was involved in lowering the town's ISO rating from a three to a three slash eight B. It was better than Rutland Cities at the time. In the process of the new chief taking. Um. Possession of the department, which is the proper term. Um, he put out some directives. And I'd like to point out, um. These were directives that he. Man. Mandated, required, requested. Be signed if you wanted to continue. And I'd like to talk about, um, section two, general responsibilities conduct. Two point one. As agents of public trust, we must continue to maintain high standards of professionalism. Conduct of employees and volunteer members. Will be I A W in capital letters, town policy, except noted. I A W means in accordance with. We go down to, um. Two point three point one, freelancing not tolerated, again. Referencing the town policy. Two point four, and it goes through the whole bunch of them. All of which say in accordance with. Town policy and it gives the sections. You were never handed the town policies, but yet we were, people requested. Required. To sign the document. How could you sign a document that you don't have a copy of? That's one point I'd like to bring out. Um. We've been asked for certifications, credentials. I would like at this time. Because I've supplied mine for years. It's mandated by my national certifications and my state certifications. I would like to see in writing. The certifications of. Bob Giolito, Whit Montgomery. And Chief LaHart. We're being requested that, required, mandated. I think it's only fair publicly, the three of them have their certifications and qualifications. Written out so we can all see them.
On what basis? Are the same police officer, a DMV person for Bob? Or Whit as a police officer, a police chief?
Uh, in whatever reference they're using their connection to this process.
Okay.
So it might be, it, it might be police. It might be search and rescue. It might be. Uh, I don't know what the proper wording is, but. We're being asked, so if they're going to come in, in either. Again, communication, I'll let this either evaluate or observe or instruct or whatever. Whatever capacity they're coming in as. We should see their qualifications. If I go to a training. And it's an EMS training and I'm told. That's the best person. They've been doing it forty years. And I ask, what's their level? And they tell me they're an EMT, emergency medical technician. That's great. But it won't do me any good. Because I'm an advanced EMT. Anybody who's going to train me has to be equal to or higher certified. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but you lost me because I have a. Fire chief that went through a hiring process. That was cleared through all of his background, right? And all of his certification. And he came, he came into, I believe, Killington Fire Rescue, EMT and KESAR. And as you're stating, it's because this person that came in and said they're an EMT person and they're going to train you. You're going to step up and say. What level? And you're not going to take direction from them because you're an.
I didn't say, no, you, let me finish.
No, 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 let me finish because you stopped and I let you stop, but that's what you had said. And what I hear is a fire chief. I come into a town and said to everybody, I want to see your certifications. And what I'm hearing is that. There was a box, but there's nothing updated since two thousand eighteen or nineteen or whatever. And what I'm hearing is, is that this person, the chief, was asking for this stuff since he got here. And even still now, what I'm hearing from an outside source. Called Rutland Search and Rescue, I believe it is, saying that there is not enough here. For them to even say, and, and one of the things states that the town is at risk if there was a. Accident that was to happen with equipment. Now, that's not me saying it. This is from an outside source, so. You know, on one hand, Steve, you're telling me that when someone comes in and you're at, you're going to ask for. Whit Montgomery's certification. I'm asking you for what? Like, that day, he was asked to come in by. Chief LaHart.
You were not asked to do any training.
You were asked to come in by the chief and Bob G was asked to come in by the chief too? Were you to do any training or what were you there for?
He was there to evaluate.
You're, you're there to have open conversation, dialogue.
You got this guy back. Yeah, but you haven't had this guy. He hasn't.
So, um. Can I be to help frame this a little bit? My name is Joe Clapper. I'm the search and rescue coordinator for the state. And. The incident in question, I was reaching out to, to the individual SAR assets that I'm familiar with. But. What I've heard you say a couple of times was that there was a skier lost in the back country and that she's safe. There have been six skiers in the back country since. The KESAR team has been deactivated.
Okay.
So. I'm here simply because I've lost an asset in the area and I'd like to see how this is going to play out. But, um, and all those six years have been, you know. Taken care of, but there is a hole. There's a glaring hole. In the back country rescue right now, and that's my sole reason for being.
So have you worked the state of Vermont? Police, is that what you said?
I'm, I work in the Department of Public Safety.
Right.
And I'm the search and rescue coordinator for the state.
Okay. And you also, you also work with STOW?
I'm a lieutenant and the training officer for Stone Mountain Rescue.
Okay, and so. Do you think it's irresponsible for? Um, a town to put people out with a report from Rutland City stating that. The folks don't have the qualifications or the, or the, or the equipment is not, and you, you know. I mean, that, that's what I get out of this here. And if it's just people going out to search, I don't think they need the ropes and everything else, but. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I, I couldn't belong to a.
I'm not quasi-military type of. So I'm not here to man, to testify or give information one way or the other. But I think you, what is happening, um, I, I did briefly see the letter from, from Rutland. You're conflating two things. There's. High angle technical rescue. Right? And there's backcountry searching and rescuing, right? There's completely. Different, those are completely different skill set and, um. And I think they're getting conflated, you know, KESAR, you just take all of the skill set and. So I think those two things are becoming somewhat conflated. The, the gap that's currently existing in your region is for. Backcountry rescue, a skier off the back. And on every one of those six halls. Um. So just so you know, if anybody goes missing in the state, the first people, person that gets called is me or my contemporary. It's in statute. Right?
Okay.
So ski patrol always calls me. And I would, I would, depending on where they are, I would put KESAR on standby. Right? Like, hey, listen, we've got them out there. When, just so for the advocacy of the people in the room, if someone goes off the back of Killington. They're going down in the Brewers Brook, which you're all familiar with, and it's the long way out, right? It's, it's a couple hours of that person who was already called for help. To be on their own. And from my perspective, being able to put a, a resource on them to make sure that the outcome is positive in the end. Is, is what I currently am lacking in the area.
So just a quick question, is there specific training requirements for even that part of? The rescue part?
No, my, my predecessor started something called Vitar. Um, which is a voluntary course you can take online. But. I'm not, okay, so whoever's taking notes, I am now not talking as the fire director. I'm talking as a member of Stone Mountain Rescue. Um. Stone Mountain Rescue is on the resource list for, uh, the state for searches. And. Small percentage of that team. To my aggravation, have, have no background other than internal team training, navigation, you know, that kind of thing. Um.
Well, the reason I ask is because I know when my conversations with the chief, when this decision came. Was that he was going to reactivate that portion of it. And then all of this happened. He, the goal was to, you know, the, the biggest fear was everything we were doing technically.
Yep.
And that was the part we don't meet any requirements for and shouldn't be doing any of. But the, the actual search piece was something we discussed right from the beginning about reinstituting. Like within a few days and then we wanted to get to this. Was something we discussed right from the beginning about reinstituting, like within a few days, and then we wanted to get to this meeting. Because the request in the letter is actually to be separated from the fire department to be their own entity, and that's what we're. Working on tonight.
Yeah, so that's where I'm standing here. Okay.
Thank you, Murray.
Okay, thanks. I think the, um, there is a big misconception that the NFPA standards are. To be applied to backcountry rescue. I have a letter here from Neil Van Dyke who was Drew's predecessor. It says, um. It appears that they are evaluating K S R by using NFPA standards, which is, which not a single wilderness backcountry SAR team in the country uses as a standard. If memory serves well, there is even language somewhere in the NFPA standards that say these quote, do not apply to wilderness operations. Getting evaluated, they need an evaluation, getting evaluated by an M R A team, Mountain Rescue Association team like Stowe or even V S P. SAR, which would be Bruce review there. I might be more relevant. Fire and urban law enforcement have no concern here.
Well, in search and rescue, that's true on the ground, not for the technical part. And what I would ask, um, Drew.
Also.
Do you guys have, do you guys have the NFPA standards and the other standards related to your ropes and technical equipment? And do you send people out for training to, to manage that equipment?
Um. So now as a, a Stone Mountain Rescue person, and I'm not speaking for the team, but as a training officer, I suppose. Um, we do not adhere to NFPA standards. We, um, we stay. Um, abreast of industry best practices. Um. We used to send people out to get outside certifications and we've moved to an internal training model. Um. So just as a. I really wasn't intending to talk, but now I am. So just as a, um. Neil Van Dyke, who's my predecessor, who had this job for ten years, also founded Stone Mountain Rescue in nineteen eighty. Is probably the pretty eminent search and rescue person in the Northeast, but actually the Mountain Rescue Association president for a number of years. Um. I'm super papered, like I was lucky enough to get that all over the place. And I'm also a mountain rescue, um, association. Um, high angle rescue evaluator, right? So I evaluate other mountain rescue teams. Um. I'm not here to talk about high angle. I'm here to tell you that you have a gap. In your first responder presence for people in the backcountry.
Do you keep rope logs and things like that?
We are here to talk between the rope logs this year after thirty years. Now we do, but we didn't always. Keep them.
And there was, you know, the issue we're hearing is from the city of Rutland, which has the two people who reviewed it are trainers. Said that we are in a significant liability if anything were to happen because we're not.
I would say that, um, again, I'm talking about Stone Mountain Rescue, probably one of the preeminent high angle in the country. I think that if a NFPA certified instructor came in and saw how we operate. They could probably even have pause with us. Problem is, all of our rescues start with a height and all of fire starts from the roadside, right? So there's a, there's a weight. It really comes down to a weight issue.
I mean, it goes, it comes to the question of should we be doing technical? And that's the, that's a separate question. That's an operational question.
Question is, the, the, it's going back to what we were saying, that you're asking urban. NFPA. Requirements for a wilderness team. This is their, they're, they're the value, they're, that's, they're still fairly urban. I mean, I, they had, they had a rescue open dearly. It took them hours there. They were exhausted. Dragging up three hundred pounds worth of equipment. We had, they did not call us, I mean, we, they were not present when K S R. Had to lower a suicide victim off of Pyco on a waterfall cliff rock two summers ago. It should have been a law enforcement operation, but they completely left us abandoned. We were K S R alone.
Who was that?
But. State police. And our local police. Were gone, and there was no fire there at all, which is strictly K S R had to. Get the person down with ropes. Then I thankfully was there. She's our technical, was the technical leader. She called the fire, uh, I think it was Steve to, um, go to the firehouse to get our equipment out of the unlocked closet where it is. So it can be accessed for this specific reason. Brought the ropes that she needed, the care beaters, the I D. We had a two rope system with a three to one. Let the person down. She was in charge of the technical. I was in charge of the back from the way up. I looked around, only K S R people there, which was wrong on many levels. Then I had to drive the body down the back of my truck, which is not fun. But anyway, what I'm saying is they obviously was a backhanded way, I guess, of a confidence in our technical ability at that time. There were no issues. We have also Mount Times did a big article about us just last summer. Where we do do some training on dear leaf because that is in our backyard, as you can call it, an attractive nuisance. Probably no one has fallen off the cliff itself, but a lot of people climb up there, but there have been several carryouts where ropes have been needed. Get the person out, which we handled. Right? Well, also I'm thinking that the liability wasn't a problem before. Why is it a problem now?
The liability was always the problem. Nobody knew about it.
But we were, it's.
I'm just saying, because there was no records, the liability always existed.
Okay, but is it a change from, is the insurance company?
No, I think it's a change from a chief, um, communicating with the town manager. Of what's going on because, um, Chief Lahart, can you? Title a group here about when you came in with the fire department with their equipment that's not updated. And what was wrong with it? And I just find it kind of like we're all talking about saving people's lives. And I get where you're coming from and pumping ground or whatever they call it, you know. Get out there, whatever it is. Ground and pound. You know, get out there and do that. And I don't believe anyone out there that's lost also. So I think we're all here trying to find it. But at the same time. What I find about a fire department and a police department is, number one. Us three guys just approving a budget and it goes underneath an insurance policy. And it is hard enough telling somebody to. Go into, why the hell you wanna go into a burning building or any of my friends? I have no idea. I mean, just because you have equipment and you feel a little safer. I have no idea. Climbing down rocks with a, with a rope or whatever. Doesn't really thrill me or anything like that. But we are liable, just like today, there's fifty or sixty people or maybe more in this room. And it's all coming down onto us three once again because of miscommunications or whatever. But. There's a liability side. So when I read from the Rutland thing, the ropes, and that's not the walking and the finding of a skier or whatever, okay? But the rope side is a hazard. There's no records of it. Of when they were bought, when they were used, and when they were taken out of service, if they were taken out of service. Some of the other stuff is the same idea as some of the clips or whatever. But also when you came in and the fire department itself, I know you've come to the manager. And had to ask for other equipment because it was not safe for the firemen to go into a fire. Can you expand on that?
When I take over a fire station, because this isn't the first fire station that I've ever gone into and evaluated. I look at all the systems that are what I call immediately dangerous to life and health. From the fire and EMS side, it goes basically to IV fluids, defibrillator pads. Um, drugs, anything that we're gonna push into the human body that has an expiration date. I like to get a hold of the expiration dates and take a look and make sure we're not pushing something that's out of date into the human body. On the fire side, the fire department, we look at our turnout here. First thing I looked at, I assessed the turnout. Some people were in what we call. BA compliant turnout. Under the standard, it's got a thermal protection, it's got the barriers, it's got everything that they need, needs. Then. I moved forward and I looked at the, the breathing air. If I put them into someplace that's oxygen deficient, I need to make sure that they're, they're. I found deficiencies in turnout gear. I found deficiencies in S C D A. I found deficiencies in hose testing. I found deficiencies in maintenance for the ladder. My predecessor did a fairly good job with hose testing. I think COVID was, uh. Was, was a big issue during COVID. The companies weren't coming out and doing it. So since January, I have approached the town for, uh, purchase turnout gear. Try to get everybody in protective clothing that meets the NFPA standard. Vermont has what we call an exterior interior kind of a system. My predecessor believes. That people were adequately protected and expired turnout gear. Uh, working outside. I don't make that distinction. I, you're either compliant or you're not compliant. Did the same thing with K S R. I walked in, I looked in the closet, already knew. That the, the ropes didn't meet the standards. That I work under, whether it's the park service. NFPA sixteen seventy with regards to technical rescue, which does talk about wildland in urban. That's how I evaluate. And then I do the personnel. Box that I was given, um, had people that have, have been gone. People that aren't active. I had to go through and, and sort through the box. It was just easier to start from scratch. Meet everybody, fill out an application, a contact sheet. Now I've got your phone number, I got your active. There are still, there are still things in this building after ninety days. I still don't have. That's, I don't have access to the e-Dispatch. Gary hasn't finished training me. I don't have access to the security in the back room for key fobs, things of that nature.
Not us.
We're, we're on number eight, aren't we?
Fire department has all the accidents.
So I'm listening to the state or we're gonna refer to you as the Stowe guy, right?
Just so you know, I'm in charge of the Vermont State Police Search and Rescue Team as well.
Okay. And, and, and this letter from, um, Chief Lahart dated March sixteenth. I'm just gonna read the last paragraph, which kind of comes to what I think you were saying or whatever. Is my hope that the SAR embraces the one team, one fight, either you have effort leadership model. That I desire as a, as the chief of a passionate group of talent. I hold no grudge against members demonstrating loyalty to their neighbors and friends with SAR, within SAR. By resigning and placing an undue burden on the remaining teammates. Because we have developed a standard of service slash care. They are welcome to reapply on a case by case individual basis. So I guess the question is, is between us here is that what I'm learning is that there's two different. There's the, what did you call it? Pound and. Round and pound, which is going out and finding lost skiers, I would guess, right? Going out.
Search, right?
Backcountry search.
And the rescue element of that.
But there's not, there's not the ropes going down that we're being told that we don't.
But can I, 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 I do not.
I just, I think it'd be an ATV person.
Well, no, actually, can I clarify that? And I've already seen other people interrupt you, so. That is not simply for recreationalists, right? My responsibility is for the vulnerable population. Alzheimer's, you know, that type of thing as well, which I would use K S R as a search. Element for it. So I appreciate that. That's, it's not just recreation.
And the other question, just for information, K S R responds to things outside of Killington as well. Typically.
They, I, I don't know what.
I mean, I'm, I'm understanding that you've done, done things outside.
The five, three days before I, um, accepted this job. Uh, we were on a fully involved, that's something, two or three day search for an Alzheimer's victim in Cavendish. The K S R was one of the primary teams that I put into the field.
We had one two years ago over on. Hundred cramps.
Yeah.
Right, so. So when I'm talking about searching, it's not just.
Right, but that's a different than.
Rapping down a rock to get a stranded ice fire, right?
Right, I mean, and, and so, you know, I mean, I guess. To me, it's one, you know, we.
Well, the first question is, the, the question in the letter was, do we start a separate group? That's question one. Question two is, where do you, what are we doing? What we're doing.
Question one kind of confuses me because I thought Bob G. And Whit Montgomery started a separate group, but the fire department dragged them in to make it to here. I mean, you guys, you guys, you guys went to the Secretary of State and you filed their. L L C name or whatever at the time, Steve. So, I mean, um, but it did come in underneath the fire department. And now you're asking to be, I, I guess this group is being asked to step away from the fire department and be a group on their own.
Gary. And just to be clear, the select board. Told us that we had to bring them in. We brought search and rescue under the fire department. At the request of the current select board.
Current select board? I'm saying, well, with that, okay, current at that time, and this is what year?
Whenever it started, but I believe.
Two thousand twelve.
In two thousand and twelve. Chris Bianchi was a part of it, but we were told they wanted search and rescue to be under the fire department. And that's why Steve proceeded with the trade. Well, I can't speak for Steve, sorry, but. It wasn't that we dragged them in, the select board told us to do this.
Can you look that up in eighty minutes?
Yeah, I mean.
When I was on.
No, it wasn't.
The second of all, one other point. Never did I place anybody that was an interior firefighter in incompetent gear. Gear that the exterior firefighters wear is not only repaired, inspected and professionally maintained. If any of it doesn't come up to standard, it's thrown away. Always. Interior firefighters, for instance. I've never restricted Chief Lahart from any portion of this building or any of its operations. Every time he messages me, I quickly answer him back with the information he needs. Even when I'm out of the country. But have not been asked about certain things. I have not been asked. How we do things, why we do things. And it's okay with me if they wanna leave me out of this process, but I have never kept him from anything. He has a password and a screen name in e-Dispatch, which he just said he doesn't.
I said, I don't have the administrative.
You do. You have an administrative password in there. He never asked me for. So anything he asks me for, I give him. Immediately. I, I have no reason not to, but I don't want to do it anymore.
Hillary VR hiker biker in the area, uh, locally, and I'm definitely concerned about not having a street store. But there's a lot of he said, she said, and I don't know what the truth is and what the truth isn't. My main concern is I've, I've run multiple billion dollar companies, I've owned companies. What I don't understand is how somebody can come into a, a, an area, not get to know the people. If I was managing it, and, and there's a lot of things he's gotta deal with, I understand that, but part of this thing is to manage people. When you manage people, you get to know your people. Then you, you, you sit there and you figure out what you need to do to get these people better. Let's call the gentleman from the state, bring him in, let's train our people. You have people that have been doing the job here for X amount of years. They know the area, they know what it takes, they're in shape for the most part. Why not use them and get them trained? Get the right equipment, get what is needed for these people. Instead of, you know, letting them walk or getting rid of them, they're good resources in the area. They have contacts, they know the area. What are we doing here getting rid of? Doesn't make any sense. At all to be bringing in new people to train when we have the people here that can be trained. If they're not trained, train them. Get them where they need to be so we have a system here that we can be proud of instead of pointing a finger at everybody. Nothing's getting accomplished that way. Train your people, get the equipment, ask this gentleman from the state to come in and do what he did in Stowe. We can do it. We have the ability.
We're gonna have to let him finish.
Um, just as a, uh. This is an anecdotal, um, I brought the B S P team to Killington to train with some of the K S R people this February. Um. So, yeah, I, I have faith in their backcountry ability. Um. My sole reason for being here is to determine whether, um, in the near term. There's going to be, continue to be. Um. A gap on my resource list. And. Um, so I don't care who shot me, right? Um. That's the only reason that I'm here. That's the only reason that I'm here.
Okay, and we have someone up here.
R two.
R two. Hands up. You're muted yourself.
There's a person by the name of Car two with their hand up on the Zoom call. You're not, you are muted at the time. I guess you don't want to speak, so put their hand down.
Says lower hand, the first one.
And see that best.
Um, I have one thing and then I'm gonna leave the room. Um, a large per- portion of what I do is go around to local fire departments that are interested in developing search and rescue teams and train their teams. So, um, as I told the town manager, um, I'm an available resource. I technically work for all you folks. So, um, if there's anything I can do, um, to help resolve this, I'm more than happy.
I mean, we're gonna get there. I just have one question for you before you leave. Leave us without the state police.
Um, if you could just raise your hand. Do you have a question for me?
Yes. You said that you go around in Vermont area to fire departments to set up.
The state of Vermont, not the whole state.
Right, the state of Vermont.
Yeah, there's a lot of small fire departments that are interested in developing search and rescue team.
So what my my question was going to be, is that where normally a search and rescue team starts out of from a fire department? Or a police department, or are they all on their own?
Well, um, I I can't, I really, I I don't know if I can accurately answer that question. Um.
Go ahead, there's enough confusion already tonight, though.
I'm gonna speculate on this. Um, people that are on fire departments um are willing and they're motivated. And they are available, which is a very difficult thing to find in people nowadays. So they're organized, right? So whether they reside within that fire department, that's kind of a seed point very often. Um, outdoor groups and, you know, outdoor education classes. There's a lot of people that are interested in being a part of the search and rescue community, but um I do answer phone calls or emails or, you know, from fire departments on a regular basis.
Over here.
And 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 you haven't asked this question, but Stone Mountain Rescue is not part of the fire department.
Why?
We have our own chief.
So anyways, one of the questions that you had brought up before was about how the K S R ended up in the um, under the fire department. Uh, originally, a group of five people got together, which included um, Bob Chalito, Murray McGrath, Dave Kopic, um, um. Sorry, Joel and Connor. And it actually, a lot of it came out of a concern because there was a year where there was just so many people getting lost in the backcountry off the back of Killington. No way of preventing them to get there. This was probably around uh late two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And I was on the board in two thousand and thirteen. At the beginning of this time, that group was working really hard to set up and do the basic search and rescue. But they really didn't fall underneath anything. Um, at the time that I was on the board, that's when they eventually went under the fire department. Prior to that, they went through being under the Civil Air Patrol.
Civil.
Civil Air Patrol. I mean, there was a lot of issues in trying to get things like this started up. But they eventually ended up in the, under the fire department. And there was some headbutting because it's really hard to take two groups of people and just throw them together. And it took a couple of years, but they finally figured it out and worked out the way they needed it. And I honestly believe in the past couple of years, the fire department has appreciated the fact that they have people for doing the search and rescue. And those people were willing to help out on fires that had to do with wilderness. One up on Tier Leep, one uh down by the White Church. So there's a lot of experience here. But I think the thing that I want to say is that headbutting was really, really rather ugly in the beginning. It was something that concerned the town manager greatly. It concerned us all greatly. But it was forced, the issue of putting it under the fire department because of the insurance. Not that the insurance is huge, but there's gotta be something there. And that made it all turn into something that eventually where they all did more training. They got people who were experienced on ropes. And it worked out really well. What I have an issue with is what we've been calling this limitation. As this gentleman said here, I would expect somebody coming in new to take a group of people who have been volunteers, working for this town for many years, even with their shortcomings. We all know everybody has shortcomings. But my expectation of somebody coming in would be to get to know the people, to ask them the questions, to understand how they have been working so far, because you can't change something unless you understand how it works in the first place. It's not a miscommunication when a leader comes in and makes people feel, and there's a lot of people on that list. And you can't tell me that seventeen people all misheard or felt wrongly in being mistreated. That's a serious statement right there. Now, when Murray told me about this in the first place, because as Ashley had said, the women didn't all realize. Well, I'll tell you, I figured it out in two seconds flat. When they, when he talked about both Denise and Jen, who happened to be two way different personalities. And I find it disturbing, and you should too. Now, I would like to see Mr. Hart succeed. But in order to be a leader, it's not just about chain of command.
Yeah.
It's about respect. Respect that should be given to him, but respect that from him to the people that he is trying to take over for. And right at this point, I haven't heard it. And I've heard several people say, no, that's not the way it's happened. And that concerns me. You're right, it is he said, she said. It is personnel. But it's extremely concerning when a new person comes in and disrespects people who have tried very, very hard. I honestly wish he can do the job, he can make our municipality better. He can make our fire department and perhaps even K S R. But from what I've heard with the way he deals with things, and again, it's hearsay, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm concerned because I sat on this board when we hired somebody and did tons of vetting, and it didn't work out. And we just waited way too long to take care of that problem. Now, either something changes now, or we're gonna be in the same position in a year. Because if you don't have the viol- volunteers, you won't have a fire department. And you won't have a search and rescue.
Okay, you're okay. Marcus.
My name is Mark Fiori. I uh have been on the fire department since I was thirteen years old, right around there, started as a junior fireman. Um, and I was inactive for quite a long time on the department. Uh, one thing that Chief Lahart did was actually reach out to me and have a meeting with me to sit and talk about the reason why I was inactive, um, you know, reasons why I wasn't showing up and how he could get me to show up more. And what he could do to uh to get me to come to more calls and all I can say is, respect is mutual, um, and if you're treating someone with respect, you'll get it in return. And he treated me with respect. And he also got it in return. To be completely honest with you, I I didn't expect it to go as smooth as it did. Just because of how long I was inactive and it's off of everybody else's opinions and stuff like that, um. You know, that can, that can obviously change someone's thought about who you are. Um, but he didn't let any of that affect him. So I I can vouch for him as far as uh you know, him showing respect for members of the department, other in- inactive members of the department. And reaching out to to see why they're inactive, what's going on in their personal life, do they need any help as far as that? Um, so so all those, you know, all those points that Patty touched on, I mean, I've seen him do that throughout the fire department. Um, I mean, I can't really speak on his behalf, but it it almost seems like this whole K S R thing is just a huge misunderstanding. And I think if you asked him, he would think you guys are totally capable of going and searching with and looking for someone else, I would think. I mean, Murray, Christ, anybody, anytime anybody gets lost behind grass or a long trail, first thing I ask is, where's Murray? You know, huge, huge ass out right there, but you know, uh, from what I've seen, it looks like he has asked the same uh, fire and EMS as far as training records and stuff like that. I had to do it. I had to fill out an application. I had to fill out all my training records, what I do, what I have, and and give them to him, I think. It it almost seems like that's, that's the issue, is him asking for that stuff. I don't, I don't think he's questioning on whether you can do the job or not. It's just something that he needs to have to cover himself, because he is the chief at the end of the day. It is a paid department. It's no longer volunteer. That's that. I mean, it's all gonna come down on him at the end of the day, so.
And and I appreciate that, Mark. I just don't think that other people got the same amount of respect that you get.
Specifically, the women.
So I just want to read, because I don't want to go through the whole. Relate to what happened that night, but the beginning of my letter to the town manager and the Killington Select Board. I wrote, after fifteen years as a volunteer at Killington Fire Rescue, I have always felt to be an integral member of a team that provided an important service to the town of Killington. As an advanced emergency medical technician, head of first response, a team leader for K S R and treasurer for the corporation, I had never felt unsafe, disrespected, discriminated against, and bullied, as I have experienced in the last seven weeks by the new Chief Lahart and his wife Leslie. I had offered to help Chief Lahart with the transition. I had the first, very first meeting I had with him. After the introductions, I walked in and he looked at me and he said, who made you head of first response? To me, that was being bullied, but you can take that as a personal question. Um, I guess what I wanted the um town manager and select board to know, that since I had been dismissed, um, that there are a lot of responsibilities that go with head of first response. Um, there are many. And um the actions that Chief Lahart has taken is going to leave a huge void on the first response side of the Killington Fire Department. So this not only affected search and rescue, this is also affecting um first response. And we have very few first responders. We have a couple of basics left, maybe four. Our our advanced people, Kathy is advanced. She's from um Pittsfield. It's hard for her to respond. Steve is gonna be retiring. I am dismissed, so you really have a big lack in, a big void in this area.
So I have a question that has to do with the, the ten, basically the last paragraph. Is one idea could be modeled after Stone Mountain Rescue? Does K S R need to have its own meeting to decide if this is the direction that they would like the program to go?
I think we discussed that, and that is the conclusion that we would like to have happen.
Under the town.
Under the town. When we first, when we first came in, I give this little history background. When we first came into the fire department, there was some mud in the heads, but uh the Gary at the time um basically described, we worked it out that we were three basically, three-legged stool. He's kind of operated independently. We're an independent agency under the umbrella of the seat of the fire department. We didn't tell them how to fight fires. They wouldn't tell us how to go find somebody in the woods. That's basically what it came down to. And we, and we fully respected each other's capabilities of what they do and expertise and the field that they do it in. But there wasn't a lot of overlap. There is overlap on the medical side because we you run into injured people periodically, but we, again, whoever has the highest medical certification, they take over. If I'm a wolfa prefer, and if I find somebody above my pay grade, I'll do what I can stabilize until the next level comes up. That's just the way it works. But we were allowed to operate pretty much independently. And as so is uh Mount Rescue was doing now, we train within and we're competent over who, what personnel has different expertise in certain areas. Jen was our ropes expert. She's well decorated and trained as a mountain guide and she, we were current on all the mountaineering rescue techniques. The uh, we were, she's been training us in that. Um, Dave Kopic, myself and Joel are really good at navigation. Connor could not get lost blindfolded in the woods at night. It's that's an internal compass, amazing. But anyway, so we are experts, what we do, we're also institutional local knowledge. You look at a topographical map, all the lines are in twenty foot elevations. Run into a fifteen foot for an eighteen foot cliff back there. It's not on the map. We were doing training off the driven, driven uh bike trails at night. They were, uh, with Courtney and myself, and they were asking, where were we? Radiant, why are you taking so long? We ran into what we got clipped out. It's flat. Yes, it's flat. It's just vertical, eighteen feet. That is not on the map. It's local now. So, yes, to your question, Steve, we'd love to go under the town.
The, so, would there be, or should you have a smaller group, not forty people, who would meet with to kind of coordinate how it would be set up to mirror how Stone has.
Yeah, there's like, there's not forty on our team. There's only like seven, it's fifteen, so there's a lot of support, but.
I'm just saying, I haven't been asking everybody in the meeting to have.
Absolutely.
Um, to meet with him and get, this is what we have, this is what you need to get. Um, because we're very supportive of any trading that you're gonna need. If someone, just to use an example, if someone was a firefighter but wanted to get E M T, they can sign up for the course and the town's gonna.
I'm not there yet.
I'm not looking at you. No, but I'm, what I'm saying is, if somebody needs, like, rather than have just a person or two people that are certified in an area, if you wanted to have more people, because not everybody here is here every day. Um, and to get more people to a higher certification, we're behind you.
Yeah, my question would be, if it was, if it was a separate organization under the town, the town still needs to have the same record keeping, training logs and everything else, and who's gonna be overseeing that from the town side? Okay, um.
Your name? Jonathan Mari. Uh, you think Chief Beasley, I believe, has been opened his hand up a few times?
We called on them, they didn't.
Okay, um, and then second, the, yes, to what you were saying about training and extending training um, inside of the department before and after this transition, the town has been very helpful and supportive of getting a firefighter to in an E M T class to become certified to help fill the needs of the department.
Mm-hmm.
So as far as acquiring training, it's not really a hard process. It's the, just a commitment of time and availability.
I mean, we're looking at it from a financial commitment. You're looking at the time and the practice and you would have to put in.
Yeah.
We just have to sign the check.
Yep. It's, I, I'm not exactly sure, but it's been up a while.
Oh, all right, Chief Beasley is up. I don't know if that's the person that was up before. I don't know.
No, it wasn't.
Who is Chief Beasley from?
I believe Chief Beasley is probably my group of firefighters.
Beasley, can you unmute yourself? You have a hand up?
Chief Beasley, your hand is up? And you're muted. Nobody knows how to put their hand up, and nobody knows how to unmute themselves. Push the spacebar. All right, so. Thanks, go back inside.
Fire, uh, it's Peter in the back row.
Thinking away a little bit to the issue of personnel that you discussed and talking about the financial. Um, what is your, your insurance company say about what is required? If it stays, if all the certifications are just as is now, how much more will it cost? Will they say, did they say, no, you won't be able to get any? Will they say, did they say, no, you won't be able to get any, or just what the financial implications are?
To be honest with you, when it comes to operational things for the town, regardless of which department it is, whether it's the highway department, the fire department, the police department. When training is required, if we're gonna have a staff, the town has always picked up the tab and we don't, we make it work within the budget because it's necessary. And if we, if it's something like, if this is gonna become more expensive than it used to be, because we're gonna do more training and more issues, we're going to modify the budget the next time. To accommodate that, we have done that, we have to do this with, with the, with the CDL drivers.
Is there a loss?
I'm lost because.
I'm just told that it was gonna cost more.
No, no, I'm lost because I was told that this thing, this group started up in two thousand and ten, eleven, or twelve. And there was a time where a previous select board, that none of us were on. Had to take this group into the fire department for a reason. To be under the control, and then there was two sides bickering and arguing back then for, I don't know how long. And then it was told that it was a three-legged stool, just so I get this right. And even though we're underneath the fire department, um, we're gonna pull our leg out and you're still gonna stand. Because we're gonna do things our way and we're not gonna record them or whatever, but now that it's underneath the fire department. They want to pull away from what the two thousand and twelve board said they had to do in order to accommodate the town. And we're sitting here and I'm still trying to get. It sounds like Kesar and the fire department. At another time in, I don't know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, eleven, whatever. Didn't get along together then, until it was, we're off on our own. That's what I heard. I mean, conversation amongst us three now, because I think we've heard, unless, you know, I'm just trying to find out, so. So if we now all of a sudden take away what this select what did in two thousand and twelve. Okay, by bringing it into the town and underneath the fire department, where does it stand and underneath who? And who is supposed to be keeping the records and who is supposed to be doing, or is this just a? What's that word called again, a two, pump and dump for whatever? You know, I mean, do we, are, are we looking at a rope, high, whatever, are we looking, and that's something that I think. This board needs to take like the next ten minutes. And go into executive session and walk into another room and have a conversation of everything that's going on here. Chief's got his hand up.
I'm not a chief. Um, trooper. Um, trooper, it's sworn. Uh, thank you all for your time and your passion, and thank board and town manager, um. I wish you all the best of luck resolving this. But town, I've spoken to town manager, if there's anything I can help you do, um. Send it work we all, so you can contact me in the town, but I'm gonna hit the road, but best of luck.
Thanks a lot. Okay, um, Steve Finer again, I, I just want to. Put some facts to the stories. Uh, Bill Gates was president of the corporation of the Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. And he is the one that registered named Kesar, okay? I was on Bill States. Phil States. Um, also brings me to the point. That there was a letter from Chet. Saying that the town would have their attorney. Do the paperwork up and let us know they would cover all the costs for taking the DBA names over to the town. That is not taking place.
Well, we, they have to adopt all their stuff.
Just wanna, what's on the table right now? Which then means that Killington Fire Rescue Services. At this particular moment in history is an illegal name, because it conflicts with the DBAs that exist. The state would not allow it to happen.
Thank God we got rid of the state guy.
The point of this is, I want things to happen in the proper order. As a taxpayer. Rebranding, changing logos and everything. I just question the financial need for that, that's a separate thing. Um, I would like to have the, in accordance with policy stuff. People have signed the document, but haven't seen the policies, that needs to be given to every member, so they can read it. Um, I think the town needs to be very concerned with the. Level of medical coverage, not the amount of medical coverage, the level. Denise is no longer, tonight is my last night, in December, I submitted a letter saying that March twentieth. I would be retiring from everything. That leaves us.
All kidding aside, I read that last year in the newspaper.
That was a newspaper, and then Gary and Denise asked me if I would stay on medical.
I just thought you resigned last year, that's.
I, I did, they asked me to stay on medical and I said I would do it for a period of time.
Okay.
It's a year, March twentieth, this is my fortieth anniversary, it's time. And Chet, I know you didn't think that drug I gave you helped a lot, but it took the edge off. And there's nobody left in the department who can administer that.
Okay.
But tonight's meeting?
Last February eleventh.
I didn't want to give out any personal information.
Yes, that's when Peter tried to kill me.
Yeah. So, um, I just think that, I hope the board is able to. Process everything, um, I think the request about. Not having forty people and having just a few, I think, I don't think you'll have an objection. From the leaders of Kesar to talk like that, I think, you know, it's gonna move forward. I just.
You still have your hand up, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm.
I'm just curious, uh, that document that you have? That document that you're reading from?
Yeah.
Is that the draft rules? Because I also put out CG's direct.
Membership, membership categories, this is the one where people had to sign it, it's not a draft.
Where's the sign?
There's a page, it says sign right here.
Of that, that was attached to the, to the applications.
That was all stapled together. Okay.
Uh, Josh Eckler, I used to be a member of Kesar, um, unhappy to hear what's happening and all that. Um, the situation that we're facing right now is not unique, from what I understand, Stone Mountain Rescue. They started under the fire department because they didn't know what else to do with them, similar to probably what happened back in two thousand and twelve. They have since separated because they ran into this exact same issue. And that's why they are a separate entity now. So we're not dealing with unique issues, you should probably learn, you know, based on what they did, they are the premier, you know, um, group within the state.
You're talking stuff.
Yes, yeah, so, they've separated and they did that because there was this constant of. Who's in charge, butt and heads, I don't think there's anybody in this room in Kesar that doesn't want to show their qualifications or do anything like that. I think they're perfectly happy, whatever that standard is going to be, but I don't think that there is. A miscommunication, it sounds to me there's been a disconnect, they're very different things. Seventeen, twenty, thirty people rolled their eyes, statements were made, that's more than miscommunication, that is disconnected.
Question, question on Stowe, are you familiar, are they a separate organization that buy, that gets their own insurance and the Stowe reimburses them? Or are they under their policy?
Let's not start asking the drought, how Stowe runs when you're the manager.
To not try to sort something that's not currently working. It takes, within three months, seventeen people who've been donating, I'm sorry, Denise has personally helped my son. You know, in medical policy, she's been in her business and helped people, like, Denise to walk away, like, come on, guys, we're doing something wrong, like. Listen, listen. She's personally been on, her to get dismissed so easily, I'm sorry, we're messing up. And to put up something in front of everybody and just say, these are what's not being met. I'm sorry, but you don't understand, like, we're talking about ropes, we're so focused on ropes, and that's such a minimal part of everything that's being done right now. The standards, even the Stowe guy said, and he's the head of VSP for search and rescue, says, we don't even do that, we just started doing that, and they started in nineteen eighty. You're holding to a level that hasn't been held to before, and there needs to be a transition happening to that. Or you're gonna lose seventeen people and there's not gonna be anybody on bike trails, anybody go there, because they're not gonna deal with it, it's a volunteer organization, they wanna help people. That's the point we're missing.
Yeah, Patrick Oshing, I live in town, I'm not part of anything, I used to be a police officer down in Alexandria, Virginia, and I would like to. Reiterate kind of this, and what I'm seeing is. When we used to do, and again, it was urban search and rescue, it was very different, but when we, when we had a call out for a shooter. And we had special teams come in, and I was on crisis negotiation, we had a jumper, and we had other teams come in, the biggest asset is always. The people that are familiar with it, and you may use other teams, but losing seventeen people is gonna be. Something that we can't fill as a town for years, just so. That's right, I, I won't put that forward, that's, again, unrelated to any of that, it's huge too, like. You're in a hard spot coming in, but these are your most valuable assets, that's knowledge that you're not gonna be able to teach again.
I, I'd like to speak to them. Early as March ninth, Pete Schlatter and I had a conversation on our way to the mutual AMV. Where he had said to me, hey, you know, uh, the, the groups. Was unhappy with my decision to take them offline. Maybe he, you know, kinda coached me to say, hey, you know, you know, what about the, the backwoods, the country? He's not wrong, okay, I have heard from many members who've told me, and I'm, I've got emails going back to December. Twenty-two, prior to me taking this job, where I've had talks with, uh, Dave. And I understand volunteers, I was a volunteer for years. Um, the, the different lens that I put on, to go back to Bob's conversation. My hangup with Kesar is, is too full. One, I'm trying to gather information, I was handled, handed a box of files. Then that box of files, like, it goes back, probably even when Scott Bigelow was the fire chief, if not. Firehouse is sunsetting, the record keeping, it's not up to where I think it should be. So the fire department's umbrella, when I came in, was three units, fire, EMS, and Kesar. I evaluated each of the elements, Kesar. The ropes and the technical rescues, they are not prepared to do it. I'm not saying they're not passionate about it, I'm not, I've never taken that away from Jen. But for ninety days, I've made a call with the leadership of Kesar to provide me the documentation to back up. And it backed up, and it's gone unabated, other than in list form that I received on the tenth of March. Saying they're qualified to do this, this. Now the fireside, it's just as. Unorganized, it's coming together, I'm getting the stuff that I need, so I had told Bob, I said, yeah. We can put the backwoods back in there, I know Joel's competent, Joel has one of the most complete files that I have. Dave, you know, we've talked, I know their knowledge of the woods is intimate, I didn't even meet the McGraths until the night in question. There's people on that list that I've never met in ninety days. So, I think the ground pounding element is something that's easily fixed with some basic training. Land nav, basar, the stuff that they have in their papers, but if we're gonna go into a technical realm. I can't take somebody just because they're an expert guide and say they can do something. And put my rescuers and the public we're rescuing at risk wherever.
Can I ask you questions?
Yes, sir.
Where are you gonna find these people, because search and rescue has to be somewhat local, correct, you're asking for people to have certain training. And if they have those trainings, why aren't they working now with search and rescue, so my point is, if you're gonna bring people in and train them. You've got seventeen right here, you can train.
I have no problem bringing people into training, I've already solicited that from the fireside.
So you're willing to train all, get all these people trained from Kesar? You're saying that right now, that you have no problem training them, you will, you will, right now, commit to training all these people?
Let's not drill that, let's like, keep on bringing.
That's been here all along, good question, I didn't know where we were.
I've never said that I wouldn't provide. My training is at the hands of the state and the people that do it. I'm a certified fire instructor. You know, that doesn't qualify me to teach Kesar any. You know, what I'm trying to say is, is Dave and I had worked out where the Kesar folks wanted to participate in Wildland. First, I was adamantly against it, because that's purely the fireside versus search and rescue, however. I've got people willing to do it, and are volunteering their sweat equity, why wouldn't I train them? Already put in for the Wildland training. Already have the equipment for it, I'm in the process of assessing the equipment to make sure it's up to par. Um, in Kesar, when, when I took over this job, I took over the job under the umbrella of the fire department. Okay, the, the structures, the things that were in place prior to January first. We're gone. I'm starting from scratch. So, the ground pounding elements, uh, did we not have that conversation? So, as early as the ninth, I wanted to stand Kesar back up. Bob told me that the members weren't interested in doing that with regards to the ground pound, and here we are. But I mean, I've been working with Kesar since December, trying to get this stuff.
I gotta make a motion that we.
Is there a reason why you didn't name a woman's name there when you were talking about the people that you saw as leadership that you were speaking with before? I'm just totally confused by that.
When I took over, the leadership that I was given was the leadership of the fire department. Dave Copick and I emailed back in January, he was made the head of Kesar, excuse me. The, the team leader for Kesar, and that man right there was the head of Kesar.
And who made him that?
The town did.
Okay, and so there were, you had no information about women who were in leadership positions or?
Not at that time, I didn't even know.
And how about now, how about through February and March, because there seems to be a massive disconnect. Between who's actually doing qualified, advanced level, skillful work. And who you're talking to and who you're treating like a leader.
I'm, I'm treating the leaders that I have empowered since I came online.
So, who you empowered, okay, so that's what I'm trying to say, that's.
The first one was right there, Denise Coriel. Told me she was the head of first response, I met with her, and she stayed the head of first response, I didn't dismiss her.
Be- because this, this issue that Stowe has met with and conducted a shift. I think we need to look into it and understand, what is it that's working? How is it affected with insurance, because we have a massive disconnect with our local knowledge. And I'm a rate paying taxpayer here, I'm really concerned.
What I just suggested.
Yeah, I know, I know, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
You should pick your own people. Well, this is, this is a case, our question about whether they wanna follow Stowe. Your, this is something different.
No, that's what it is.
It's the whole, I mean, the reason we're going.
Session at eight forty-two, uh, can I get a second?
I won't be here when you get back. So, okay. Yeah, but I mean, I'm not gonna make a decision that this is going the Stowe route or not. I mean, I, I've got a bunch of information that came here.
We need to collectively take.
We need to talk amongst each others, yeah. But we've been listening to you here, and we hired a fire chief, and what I'm hearing is, and I'm sorry, but. I'm hearing that Kesar had an issue when they first started. And I'm hearing that we, the town, through you, hired a fire chief on. And his job was to take over Kesar, EMT, and the fire department. He was never told that there was this three-legged stool out there that this woman was on.
He was never told that there was this three-legged stool out there that this woman was, was on its own.
Yes.
He was never told that they were on their own and they weren't part of who he was supposed to do it.
They weren't on the room.
And so, you know.
Then they should follow the chain of command.
So then they should follow the chain of command and the chief, but they're not doing it. And they haven't been giving him any paperwork or whatever that he's asking for. And then it came down to this letter that's not even in the way. And here we are as a town out in the public, in the news. And this should have been all done underneath the personnel and it should have been an executive session, but let's all talk about it out loud or whatever. And I've heard that when the group started, once again, they didn't get along with the fire department. And now they don't get along with the fire department again.
So lots of people didn't get along.
Well, this point it's.
I think there's an emotion in play.
Yeah, the question is, well, we don't have to have a vote.
I think the question is done with this. We're going to take it under advisement and have discussions. Like, I just feel like where you're going on this is you're asking this group.
Yeah.
Do they become KESAR on their own? And I don't know what the answer is, and I can't make a vote on that tonight. Because number one, I'm also told from a group that the reason why KESAR came into the fire department, if we're all listening for it, because the town had to ensure them. And the select board in two thousand and twelve, sorry, I don't agree with everything they did back then, okay? They made plenty of mistakes back then. They put this into a group into the fire department. So now I'm sitting here as a board member and I'm getting asked to approve them going off on their own when, I don't know if that's the case. So we took in enough information, so I'm done. Let's move the question to something else now.
I would like to, um, I hope somebody records what Josh said, said, because the disconnect, Stowe started out this, they're not, we're not reinventing the wheel. This happened with Stowe and search and rescue and fire go under two different certification things. And it's like trying to mix oil and water. Pacific Ocean doesn't go with the Atlantic Ocean. They're two different things.
I just wish two thousand and twelve board realized that, so then I wouldn't be here.
Jim, I was elected in two thousand and thirteen. You were on the two thousand and twelve board.
You, 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 you took over March of two thousand and twelve, wise ass, okay? And if you want to talk about respect, I respect. So you listen here, you already admitted that you're the one that approved it. So don't tell me I approved it because you already go back and I hope it's recorded. You said you approved it.
Yes, because it was two thousand and thirteen, Jim.
An hour and a half. No, we heard.
No.
In falling.
It's two and a half. Two and a half hours. So the question is, it works.
And you're still not addressing the women in the room. Special KESAR thing, you have women in here telling you that you vetted somebody, hired somebody, and they were treated horrendously. So now I guess you say we've got a human resources or personnel, take that open, but you guys are the select board. You represent this community.
First of all, that's not done at a public meeting. Cannot be done at a public meeting.
It doesn't matter. They're.
It actually does matter. It's a, it's a, we are in violation of labor law. This is all, this is all private information. And people be addressing all of these concerns in the proper manner.
What's next on the agenda?
Yes, we come back.
Uh, it's time to. We want to do financial review. I want to tell you.
I think we need to go and we need to have going to an executive session because we can't do this personnel, even though some people want us to out in the public.
If you take it, we should do that. Well, we can, we can go into executive session, develop a plan of action, and then we move on to the next meeting we have to have.
That's right.
You know, I think, I think that's.
We can motion the table, which we find it just.
Back on the record. Section.
And so you're gonna think big for executive session, so we can.
We'll just move to go in. Do you want to go into executive session?
Yeah, I mean, I think. Again, stop. I don't want to. It was going to go around and around and around.
We can go into executive session. We tabled the rest of the agenda.
At eight twenty-eight. All right. I mean, I would like, if anyone's going to not leave, I think there's two leaders from KESAR. I think it's Dave and Bob. You're both the leaders or whatever of the whole group of KESAR. And then there's Chief Lahart, okay? That, um, is the fire chief, okay? So what's that? So I would hope that you three people would hang out while we go into an executive session. Because that is the chain of command between KESAR. And if you want to hang around, we've got questions. We're out of executive session at ten oh seven. We had discussions with the that's the structure of the commanders and current leadership, current leadership of fire chief and the, um, search and rescue team. And I'm going to make a motion that this, um, board is recommend, or not recommend, and this board stands with, that we fight it on. Chief Lahart at this time to run all three, the, the structure as it stands. And, uh, we give full confidence into you to run the department. And, uh, hopefully everybody here can work their things out and get back together as being a team. I get a second? Any discussion?
David?
Hi.
I'm staying, I'm staying right now. It's going one way or the other. But I'm certainly not against. Mr. Hard.
Right.
I think what's going on within everything much up in the air.
Okay. So just put down when the minutes are taken that, um, you know, Steve Pennerin abstained from the vote without casting either way. And Chris and Jim voted yes, and we can move forward.
Excellent. And if we can save everything else, then it's a motion to adjourn.
I think you still have second citizens.
If you want to say, yeah, there's second.
Then we'll follow it, so. Is there?
Well, you can always just call for it anyway. Anybody else have?
Yeah. I mean, everybody here has stayed here, so you open it up to them.
Yeah. I think it's the second citizen, David. This time it can be about what went on tonight. It's not on the.
I wasn't encouraged.
I'm not sure.
Without saying not, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. I tell.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. And there's our next meeting at twenty-seven. It's next Monday.
Okay. It's Monday.